If you have your cell phone, please put it on vibrate or silent, please. I would appreciate that. And who would like to lead the pledge this evening?
It is very.
Who would like to read the statement? Hello, John.
What are you doing, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge.
Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, John. The loss of Midway Independent School District educated every student be lifelong learner person integrity and a positive contributor to society. First, it is public open forum, and we have this Denise Villalobos. Oh, at least I've got to read this first. The next item on the agenda is public comment and public audience, which is a topic members of the audience should address before the trustees do either public comment or public audience in a table. Before we get a reminder, audience members of the board's procedure for handling public comment. The public comment portion of the regular board meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items to be considered by the board. Anyone who wants to speak during public comment must sign prior to the start of the meeting and list the agenda item or non-agenda subject they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board. Any public testimony speaker who is speaking to a translator will receive up to five minutes to address the board. The public addressing tonight's agenda items allow all speakers who have signed up before the start of the meeting to address the board regarding an item of tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Last, we ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. Yelling inappropriate, uncivil, discriminatory comments will not be permitted. If you're speaking on items that are not on tonight's agenda, then the following applies to those speakers. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board should allot no more than 30 minutes for speakers on items not on tonight's agenda. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All comments, my person speaking, on either agenda or non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. I also caution you that your public comments should not complain about individual school employees by name or position other than your own child. Identify students pursuant to Texas Code 551-074, 551-0821, and 551.082. As presiding officer, I'm obligated to determine whether a person addressing the board has attempted to administrate or resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the board that involve district officers or employees. In the eventual comment, in the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or charge against an employer officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and to direct you to proceed with the school district's formal grievance procedures or to have the item heard in executive session depending on the nature of the complaint. A speaker seeking board resolution of a specific complaint that concerns should be addressed through the district's grievance process, which can be found online, can include policies DGPA, FNG, and GF. Grievances forms can be obtained at any campus administration officer or any central administration officer. Thank you. Our first speaker is Denise Villalobos.
Hi, I'm Denise Villalobos. I'm here to speak about item number nine, particularly switching from a standard voting practice to a cumulative voting practice. I did email all the board members back in December and received no response, so I wanted to talk about it here again today. So a standard voting practice is something that we have now. Each of y'all represent a particular place, place one, two, three, four, all the way to seven. In larger school districts, like CCISD, place one represents an actual neighborhood such as Carroll. Place two represents another neighborhood like Veterans Memorial. But at TMISD, we are a small enough school district where each of y'all actually represent the school district. It's not, oh, I represent the middle school area, I represent the intermediate area. Everyone represents TMISD. And right now, the voting practice we have, standard voting, there's no real reason for it, in my opinion. I believe we should switch to a cumulative voting where everybody interested in running is all listed out on the ballot. Let's say there's 10 people running in this upcoming election, and five seats are going to be available. Voters pick the top five. Those are your school board members. There's no me versus you, us versus them. It's everyone who is the best for the community. That's what the voters vote on, and there's no divisiveness. I know over the past year, there have been a lot of, I guess, arguments or disagreement and divisiveness on this board, and it has trickled into the community some. I believe switching to a cumulative voting practice would alleviate that. Me, as someone who, all of you know, I will run again this coming November, would a cumulative voting practice help me in any way as a candidate or any candidate in general? Not necessarily. Is it in the best interest of the community? Absolutely. So I just want y'all to think about that. I don't necessarily know the procedures to switch. However, if y'all need help, I don't mind doing the late work and calling the county clerks and stuff. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, let's move on to our discussion action items. Discuss and consider pay increases for administrative and auxiliary staff.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is phase two of the salary compensation issues that we've started last month with significant salary increases to our teachers and our ends. What this does is guarantees, with very, very few exceptions, and those exceptions would be in the range of 3.9, a minimum 4% salary increase with several administrators double digit because where they were. More importantly, it provides us with something that we haven't had, and that's a very structured compensation plan that differentiates responsibilities, number of days' work, so that when we hire an administrator, that we're able to give them credit for their experience and their education and their responsibilities. Currently, you had a plan that if you were, let's say, hired as an instructional coach, and you had 10 years' experience, and you had one-year experience, you were paid the same. That if you were on our assessment team, you were a diagnostician, you were an LSSP, you were basically paid the same. The administrators that will receive the least amount of compensation increases were those that were brought in initially at a much higher rate than what they would have been under a structured plan like this. The third thing that it does that I think is very significant is it recognizes our LVNs as a specialized category, and they are paid accordingly at a much higher compensation rate under this plan than what we previously had. The fiscal impact of this is a little over $425,000. So when you take the fiscal impact of this action that you were proposing tonight with what you previously done last month, there's right at $2 million worth of increases in compensation to staff. Having said that, before we open it up to your questions, Mr. Carroll, what can you add to this?
Just like what you said, but on the auxiliary side, except for the LVNs, it's a minimum, it's 5% across the board for the paras and the clerical staff. And then for the administrators, except with a few exceptions, it's a minimum 4%, but there are some, there are some adjustments that are much higher.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, it's good to see that it's been broken down to compensate for the people, the various number of days they work, and you have a beginning, mid, and maximum, which is a good thing, something like we haven't had, which is also very good because it can differentiate between the people as they come in.
We have a rubric for placing a new person based upon their experience, especially if it's a position that you teach first, and then you might become an administrator in your years of teaching. We give, we, we have a system to get that aligned.
Is there a current salary on this paperwork anywhere?
Current salary?
Yeah, you have proposed salary, but you don't have a current salary.
What was the first thing you said?
You have a proposed salary, but you don't have a current salary.
No, this, this is the proposed salary schedule. Everybody falls, whatever pay, whatever position they're on, that's the pay grade they fall on, and their pay is going to be within this. But this is the proposed compensation plan.
But what about the current salary? Where is that? So we can tell what percentage each one of these are.
I don't have that comparison, no.
It's all over the place, Stephen.
I know. That's why I was just wanting to see how all over the place we are.
Well, I think the biggest, in, in looking at what you're asking as far as the people, the individual people, there was one instructional coach that was brought in at the same level of a person that had zero years' experience. So giving that individual the compensation that they would earn under this, well, that was a double digit.
It was probably about a 12% increase.
There was, there was, the principals were brought in very low. They're at double digit. The chief financial officer was very low, based on his job responsibilities and, and current pay. But no, we don't have that, we don't have an actual list for you, but we can certainly get that for you.
So I guess in my question, with that comment being, being made, I guess it kind of changes my question a little bit, because at first I was going to ask the same thing that Philip, about the three steps. How do you know in how many years divide each step, or what makes you fall into each category? Because we don't have a list of how many employees are in each category.
Correct.
And of course, you know, looking at this, you know, just as we do at teachers, you know, as I mentioned, the, you know, as I've mentioned in the past, you know, we need to know what we're replacing with what we're, you know, what are we replacing? So we could see this as a budget aspect.
Well, I can tell you from, from the positions that are currently budgeted, this, this salary scale increases that base budget approximately $425,000.
So I guess, I guess my new question would be today, when, because of the way it's laid out, I guess my new question is, is there, is there, if we've hired any new administrators, just in a question, are they subject to this increase, or from the first we had go?
Yes, because they are placed on this compensation plan. They are, they are placed according to the rubric and the criteria. They, they are placed on this scale, and yes, so they, they are included.
Because in that case.
Their years of experience.
Because an LVN and an RN make two different prices, make two different salaries in the outside world. But as we talk school business.
Those are on two different.
The RNs are on the teacher's scale.
The RNs?
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, when we're talking to school business, it sounds like you're giving a higher percentage to.
But the RNs are not on.
Well, I understand what I'm trying to say, though, is they're paid on different scales. But if your rubric falls just because of tenure, you could be paying an RN more than you're paying, when an LVN more than you're paying an RN.
No.
Not even close.
The pay grade that an LVN is on the clerical, it's on the clerical paraprofessional scale, that pay grade is much lower than what the teacher steps are and the teacher gradients are for the steps.
Okay. I mean, you know, that's what my, that my concern is making sure that everybody's balanced.
Correct.
When, you know, when you're looking at this increase across.
Correct.
Hasn't the LVN been paid like a para reverse?
That's what I thought, too. That's where I need to mention.
A little bit higher.
A little bit higher.
So with all the responsibility they've had the last year of the pandemic and everything they've done, I think it's time.
I believe we're, I believe we're correcting that now.
I, I could be wrong, Jen, but I think there's only one district now that may pay more for their LVNs than us. We're very competitive, knowing that we're not, just like everybody else, we can't pay them what they're worth, but, but we've separated them, and I think they'll appreciate that.
I think that's very deserving for everyone on this page, paras, ancillary departments, all.
So in order to find out, like what Stephen was saying, I mean, you would have to give us a list of every individual employee to figure out the, so, so this just bulks it all into one?
Right, but that's what we, that's what we normally do. We don't.
I've never brought a list of individual names.
But do you have a, do you have the budget for the administrators and professional plan as of now? And what is their total budget before the raise?
I can tell you the base budget.
You can figure out more of the percentages on that.
Yeah. So once you make this, these adjustments, so in the future, will it be a more equalized raise?
Much better, much more equity, much easier for us to communicate to a prospective employee. This is our board-approved salary scale, based on what you bring to us. And, and what, what's even more important to me, Stephen, is the fairness issue with honoring years of experience versus someone that's brand new. We've been, we haven't been doing that.
Well, I agree with that.
I like that.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Can you tell me the, the base budget? The base budget is going to be, the base budget for the administrators was 2.1. Now, it's going to be about 2.4. But one thing to consider, the number that I quoted in the, in the agenda is only for the general fund, because that includes some federal fund, federal position, federally-funded positions as well. So that's the difference between the base budget and the proposed total.
Because we've added.
My number is lower because I'm not counting the positions that we're adding that are going to get federally funded. I'm doing the impact to the general fund in the, of the agenda item. But that's just the administrators. Then there's another section of people that are certified. They're not administrators, but they're, they have professional jobs, but, and they're not, they're not on the teacher pay scale like our diags, our speech pathologists, our assistant managers, and our other, other people that have certified positions. They're just not an administrator, and they're not a teacher.
So on the, on the paraprofessional page on there, on the very bottom, you have hourly 16, 13, and 32.
That's just showing the total range of the lowest, the lowest grade is the paraprofessionals, and that's the lowest hourly rate for a paraprofessional, all the way up to the highest pay grade position. That's, that's considered clerical par. And then I just have all the positions listed.
The closest group of employees that we had to a market value in comparison with other school districts were our paraprofessionals, and they're getting a 5% raise.
And just, we're kind of, we're following the Tasby model of, especially for the administrators, where each position's on a pay grade, and if each, the higher pay grades have, the higher the maximum salary goes up as you go up on the pay grades. And then what happens is usually what most districts do is, in following years, if you give raises, you usually take a percentage of the midpoint. Whatever pay grade a person's on, you go to the midpoint, and if they work 222 days, you take the daily rate times, whatever the midpoint is, the daily midpoint rate times the number of days they work, multiply that by 1%, 2%, 3%. So everybody on that pay grade, depending on how many days they work, that's the percentage of their raise. That's moving forward. Because the key is, once someone starts, they get placed appropriately on the range of their pay grade, and then in the future years, you usually give a percentage of the midpoint, the very midpoint of, of the range, of the range of that.
We haven't had that either.
And then also, what can happen is, a position can be, a position can be reevaluated, and we might say, well, this position was on pay grade three, now we feel it should be on pay grade four. So that, that would cause someone to be able to get more money, because we've reevaluated and said, maybe something changed, or something said, we said, we want this position to be a higher pay grade because something changed about it or something. That's the thing about the, you know, the compensation plan can be, it can be adjusted and tweaked how it needs to be in future years, based upon changes of whatever happens.
Well, the one thing I did like was when Steve said that, like for the LVNs, that we're going to be number two in the market versus.
Don't quote me on it. I think, I think that.
You're going like even at the bottom.
Yeah, no, we're not at the bottom. We're not at the bottom.
All these people expect us to move forward and.
And we are, yes.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you. And let me say this. What I do is give visions and, and broad expectations to Philip and Anna. These two are the ones that really have done the work that you're seeing this evening, and I appreciate it.
Good job. The only, the only difference this time is we're giving a structured plan for the administrators. But in the past, we would have just said, every administrator's going to get a flat $2,000 raise or a flat percentage raise. That's the only difference. We, we would normally never ever bring individual names. This is the compensation plan. This gives us, gives us the authority to place everybody on the plan based upon the, place upon the pay grades and the rubric that we come up with.
And then in addition, the professional staff will get a $5,000 retention signing in September, and auxiliary a $3,000. And with Mr. Hernandez's group, they will have the option of either taking the $3,000 lump sum in September or dividing it.
Divided it in two, or how many?
We're, we're letting, we're giving them a survey and letting them decide. It's, it's looking like they're going to take an amount in September and then another amount in December.
That's good. That's good, because it's good to have a structure. At least people can look at it and can do.
Oh, absolutely.
I think, yeah, we, I think Patrick just had input from his people. They, they were wanting to maybe get some of it a little bit closer to Christmas. They're getting the same amount, it's just they're willing to wait until right before Christmas to get it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing.
Like it's been checked before.
Right. And it helps, like, they're going to get it, we're going to, but we'll save it for them until, until they, but we're, we're going to leave the choice up to them.
That's good.
How they want to get it.
Good. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You have a comment or question? Mr. Vametri.
All right, let me find my, my red form. Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the 2022-2023 compensation plan as presented.
I will make that recommendation, administrative recommendation, the board approved the presented 2022-2023 compensation plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Dan seconds it. Comments, questions, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Next, we're discussing the center approval of One Government Procurement Alliance Membership Agreement.
Mr. President, members of the board, the next three agenda items are in direct response to your asking me to move forward with attempting to get the beautiful scoreboard in place during this football season for our seniors. In order to start that process, there's a buy board called One GPA that we need to be membership to that we currently are not. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carroll to discuss the buy board.
And so this is enough, we're a member of several co-ops and several person co-ops that allow us to, if we use the vendor and get the quotes from the vendors that are members of that co-op, they've done the bidding process through these organizations. The company that we're looking at to do the improvements at the stadium and for the school board, we can negotiate our pretty good deal with them, but we need to be a member of this, of this, and there's no cost. I just need y'all's authority for us to join them so that we can do the next, approve the next item, which is give Mr. Vametri the authority to negotiate the final contract. But first, we need to be a member of this co-op so we can utilize purchasing, this meets the purchasing criteria, so we can negotiate with the vendor.
And I do understand that. The only question I have is, I thought once you were a member of buy board, you were a member of the co-ops that bought into it.
Well, there's, there's several different, they're, they're all different. Like, buy board is a statewide one. Each, most of the service centers in the state have one. Like, we're members of the Co-op for Region Two. We're also a member of the co-op in Region 20, because they have Amazon. We're also in the Region Four One in Houston, because that's a good vendor we use for them. And then there's, there's other ones, then there's also their State of Texas, there's other State of Texas ones that, that we belong to, so.
So this is just another organization like buy board.
This is just another organization like buy board.
Okay, okay.
It meets the state procurement requirement.
Right, because I, I know that when you want to be a vendor on that, it's a really long questionnaire, then.
Well, all, all, each individual purchasing co-op, if a vendor wants to be a member that, they've got to apply. So if you're a vendor, you would have to bid for, to be on the Region Two good buy. You'd have to bid to buy board, to be on a buy board. You'd have to bid to Region Four, the, the, the Co-op for Region 20 in San Antonio is I think is called Pace. You'd have to, you'd have to submit all your paperwork to him to, to be a member of, to apply for the big platforms that they have.
Well, I guess, so the question comes at hand that if there are others that we're not members of, and there's no charge, is it, would it be worth it to the district for us just to become members so that we don't have to face this? I mean, I mean, we buy so many different things, everything from, when you think about it, we buy lawn equipment, all the air conditions, I mean.
Right. Well, currently, currently, none of the regular co-ops cost the district any money, but to be a member of. We're just saying that we want to join this one so we can use the vendor that we want to use for the stadium improvements.
The biggest advantage for this project is HELLIS does take buy board, and we can do that. But buy board charges a 2% fee, and One GPA is a 1% fee. So we're, by you approving them, you're saving us 1%.
That's true.
No, and that's what I'm saying, like, you know, we just apply for all of them. I mean, then we can pick the one that's the best for the district, because that's really just cutting off time, is all I'm doing, and saying, hey, we're just a member of everything, you know? But anyway, I mean, this, this sounds good. This is just a question.
Yeah, it's just, it's a good thing, but this, this is the one we've got now. Any other questions? Mr. Vametri.
It is the, Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the One Governmental Procurement Alliance Membership Agreement as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vametri. We have, we have, we have made, Mr. John seconds any other comments or questions. This would be a good thing. I appreciate it. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next, we're discussing the considered approval of scope of work for the athletic improvement from Helles and authorize the superintendent to negotiate the contract not to exceed 5.5 million dollars.
Mr. President, members of the board, having approved the delivery method of buy board through One G P A, Helles Construction Company has been a vendor for Tulsa Midway I S D. They have recently done your tennis courts and they did your track many years ago. I've also had the opportunity to do business with them in Centon I S D, in Frere I S D, in Primont I S D. If we were doing sealed bid proposals, they would not be the cheapest. There's no question about it. But they would be the best and their customer service, standing behind the product, they do many NFL stadiums such as Dallas Cowboys. We're, we're getting the best and by giving me, delegating the authority to me to negotiate a contract that will be in the neighborhood of about 4.9 million, then we can move forward and they can let the contract for the scoreboard to begin immediately.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing right there myself. That's, that's, I mean, we need to drop them and fall on it and, you know, to get everything moving.
How realistic is the, the, I mean, how realistic is that, Mr. Vamitri?
Well, everything is, is riding on that. I have asked them on two or three occasions that I'm a big fan of their company and that I'm going to go to my board and I'm going to ask that we delegate to me the opportunity to negotiate a contract and if it's not operational by September 30th, it's egg on my face. And as a repeat customer and, and someone who superintendents call me fairly often about Helles, I think we have some leverage. And if there's a weather-related incident or something out of our control, then we all understand that. But I made it very clear, I don't want to hear about supply issues. I don't want to hear anything other than that scoreboard's going to be operational. And so far, they've, they've never missed a deadline. So the, the best indicator of what someone will do in the future is what they've done in the past. So that's what I'm going on.
Fair enough. My question, only because you brought up the tennis courts, will you be supervising some of the projects so that we don't have a redo and redo like we did on the tennis courts?
Well, we have an architect that's the next item.
Yeah, I know, we had an architect down too. And we had, and we had a project manager and we had, we had several people and we still.
Is there issues with Helles' quality of work?
Well, no. Helles is the one that fixed it. They were the one that came in and fixed it.
Well, then they do the tennis courts here too.
They were the ones that came in and fixed it. They fixed both of them.
Right, and we have, court eight has a fault.
Well, that was one of the things because of the way.
Helles is the topping only, the surface.
Oh, it's only the top, okay.
It's the foundation.
That crack's been there since the court.
Yeah, we, we couldn't even, we couldn't even get it fixed. It just came back either way.
Never could use that court.
Different, different contract. Okay. They just did service.
I had a question. After the proposed price, you have some alternatives?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to exercise one.
Okay.
Which is the lights. I don't like their arches.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, I didn't see a picture of arches. I was like, where would we put arches?
We don't need arches, that's.
These were their, their choices of?
Yes, based on what, what I asked for.
So the lights, I assume would be LED?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Vamitri.
It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the presented scope of work for the athletic improvements from Helles Corporation and authorize the superintendent to negotiate the contract not to exceed 5.5 million.
I'll make that motion, that the administrative recommended the board approve the present, present scope of work for the athletic improvements from Helles and authorize superintendent to negotiate the contract. Do we have a second on that please? Ben seconds. Comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. And we'll discuss and consider approval of the architect, Lindsey?
Lenez.
Lenez. Lenez architect to work on project services.
Mr. President, members of the board, the text occupation code requires that school districts engage an architect or an engineer for construction of a public building that the cost exceeds $100,000. This project is considered a public building. I have worked with Sergio Lenez for a couple of years in some work at a previous district. He also was an architect on your performing arts center when it was built. He's a, a small business minority professional that will charge 1% of the total cost of the project to make sure that what Helles says they're doing and asks for payment is actually being done. This is our insurance policy that's required by the state of Texas.
Okay. 1% sounds awful good compared to what some people.
This guy's bonded for the full amount of the project?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Better than 5% some places.
Well, that's what I thought it was.
8%.
Well, I thought, I thought it was going to be 8% and I'm in a, I'm in Philip's, Philip's office and we've got him on speakerphone and I get to the, and I'm, I'm dying because I don't want to pay 8% and our attorneys is saying, you have to have an architect because of the price of the project. And so I ask him to fee and what'd he say, Philip?
1%.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's unheard of.
But the difference is.
He's not doing drawings.
He, he didn't create the drawings. Helles has the specs. Helles is, has their, what he is going to do is, he's going to make sure that Helles builds and does what their specs say and look at the, the payment applications and review the payment applications before we issue payment as the stage goes on, as the stage of the construction goes on, to be our third party, independent third party that's going to be on our behalf, act on our behalf to make sure that Helles does what their, what their scope of work and what their, what their drawings and what their, what their specifications say.
You must have a brother-in-law special on that bond fee he's paying because, I mean, if he's just charging 1%, that bond fee's got to be, well, I mean, that's his problem, I guess, as long as he's bonded.
$50,000 fee is what he's going to give, you know? I, I don't know what he pays for insurance, but.
Comments, questions?
Oh, I know he's got a stamp that's, that's legal, that we, that we will use.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Vamitri.
Mr. President, we, we, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approves engaging Lenez architects to satisfy this requirement for the Tulsa Midway I S D Athletic Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Vamitri. Do you have most administrative recommendation, please?
Also?
And do we have a second? John, any comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And we move on to report, focus group feedback.
On the 11th and 12th, on the 11th and 12th, a representative from Cooperative Strategies visited the district to engage our community into three focus groups that some of you attended one, some of you attended all three of them. So the first two or three slides that you're going to see may be redundant, but for those of you that, that weren't at those focus groups, this will be new information for you. This is basically an enrollment history of the district going back to school year 2012, 2013. And if you look at the bottom, you'll see that it's generally flat overall with slight decrease in enrollment. However, at the high school, if you look at grade nine and then follow it through grade 12, there's a steady decline in students leaving the high school. And in our last enrollment year, 2120, we lost 87 kids or a decline in enrollment of This is what building industry references as the facility condition index with providing a ratio of cost of renovation versus replace. According to the F C I, any percentage below 50% calls for the fiscal correct move to renovate, anything above, replace. So you can clearly see there that four of the five campuses, obviously it's in our best interest to renovate and one to replace. The conditional improvements throughout the district would be HVAC, plumbing, foundation, interior structure, finishes and roofing. This is a historical look at all of our buildings, what year they were built, any additions that they've incurred since they've been built, the site acreage, obviously the, the high school is almost 60 acres, the type of HVAC that they have, our current facility, we only have one facility with chillers that's at the high school, and then safety concerns. The asbestos concerns that you see there are only if they are moved. Then you have some issues, but under its current state, having asbestos in a building is not a problem unless it's moved. This is some of our capacity based on square footage and enrollment. You can see that the primary campus is busting at the seams, 125% capacity. That is not conducive to effective teaching and learning, nor does it allow us for having many of our parents come in our facilities as we would want. If you look at the third category, if we were to construct an early childhood center for pre-K and kinder, then that would lower the utilization percentage from 125% to 81%. The middle school or the intermediate campus is also overutilized and then at the high school, 65% utilization, there's certainly room for growth at that campus. So when we, we had these three meetings, on the 11th, we had early childhood center, we had band and choir improvements, and then on the 12th, we had safety. And based on a, a process that the consultant went through with the group, the first focus group had safety and security as their number one priority, early childhood center tied, conditional improvements, athletic improvements, fine arts and an academic career center. Keep in mind that there's no discussion whatsoever of incorporating athletic improvements in the current bond based on what you've done. Security focus group had the same priority with safety and security. In fact, you can see in each of the focus groups, safety and security was the number one priority of the group. In two of the focus groups, fine arts, improving our band facility, improving our choir at the feeder campuses, as well as some cosmetic improvements at the high school were, were very low priority, with the exception of the focus group that centered around fine arts. The need for an early childhood center was high in the top third in all of the three focus groups. And then the, the investments that we are looking at doing with the bond are safety and security, deferred maintenance improvements, visual performing arts, an early childhood center and possible revisiting the academic career center. Within the focus groups, these were their prioritization of the security projects. Spending money, security related on additional cameras, keyless entries, which would really help our, make our schools safer, perimeter fencing, secure the main entrance with the music projects, expanding the current space, buying instruments. We, according to our music people, we have students that come from economically disadvantaged families that cannot participate in band with the instrument that best suits them. And to me, with a, in a district that has the economic resources as we do, we, we can't allow that to happen.
I got a question.
Yes.
In my time here, I know we pass where we buy the instruments for the kids. Is, so you're talking about at the middle school if you have this problem or?
High school and also.
At both campuses?
And, and the instruments, according to them, are over 20 years old.
I don't think we buy every instrument. I think they're the bigger instruments.
Last time we bought instruments, when we did the T R E, we allocated, that was back in 2013, we allocated some of the money that we saved or the additional money that we got from the T R E, we allocated some, we made a significant, that was just at that time.
You've had, you've had it in your, in our, in our financial report about replacements of certain instruments.
And they, they try to do, they, in their budget, in their annual budget, they also try to allocate and try to make maybe single or a few replacements, but we're talking.
Don't get me wrong, I mean, if we need it, we need it.
John, they wouldn't have the annual budget in their budget to, to fix what needs to be fixed here. This is a main, this is a half million dollar financial, fiscal impact.
And that's what I'm trying to remember though, how much money went into that because we're, we were supposedly building a replacement for kind of like the buses was my understanding.
That, that was, that, that was for like the major instruments, the tubas, the drums and those bigger.
The bigger instruments.
And that's what they were saying, that we did have the tubas and the, but then you have a, a student that is, that's what they're explaining, that they're small and they can't carry the tuba, so we don't have an instrument for them.
That's their only option to be in band because their family don't have the economic means to buy a trumpet.
Right. And that's, that's the whole thing.
We don't buy that now, right? We don't buy the trumpet.
No, no. They take home instruments.
No, I, I'm hoping, my north star with that, because fine art saves kids, is that we can offer an opportunity for a kid who comes from a family that's economically disadvantaged that can't afford to buy a trumpet, that if they want to play a trumpet, we have an instrument for them. And that there are instruments, because our fine arts program is well-recognized as top of the line, that we provide the instruments that the band directors need in order to maintain that excellence.
The Mariachi stuff that they've had to do.
Yes. On safety and security, only the high school provides a secure festival to identify visitors. I don't know if that's exactly accurate. This was the report given from the consultants. I believe when you walk in the primary campus and the intermediate campus, that serves as a festival there, it just doesn't have bulletproof glass. Patrick, can you expand on that, why that, they would reference that?
They want to see a smaller containment area, like basically a smaller area where you would check in before you go into our current situation, just where you'd have a camera and make sure, it may be a smaller area outside, but to make sure that nobody's hiding. It's just an extra level of protection before we got in, so it's just another layer.
Because at the high school, they get, the doors are close together, but at the primary and intermediate.
There's a bigger area.
And then there's a, here, and the police officer sits here.
So the two big areas of increasing security at all the campuses is a single entrance and keyless cards that swipe to get in. Otherwise, they're locked, they stay locked. And if a teacher loses a card, they get another one, and you do whatever you do with the software to make it open the doors.
And even like seeing on that, that the focus group discussed was like, at the primary, the intermediate, where there's a lot of smaller students or younger students, the teachers, you know, we don't need to have every door keyless, just certain doors to where we might be able to save, you know, some money on that, but the teachers would know that there's five doors that are keyless in the backside of the schools where they can come in easier if there's a problem with the kids or something, we can get them in easier. Having them all would be great, but if, you know, at least some of them would be.
Similar to a hotel room key, that's what we're looking at. I, knowing that as superintendent of schools, I can't tell a parent or grandparent with 100% certainty that we're not going to have an active shooter, can't do that. But what I want to be able to do with 100% accuracy certainty is we're doing everything we possibly can. I'm not, you would know this better than I, this is your community, fencing, where it turns into a minimum security, may be a fact of life in 2022. I know that in the Uvalde report, which came out yesterday, the school district was criticized for only having a five-foot fence, and I'm reading that report yesterday, and I'm thinking, my God, we don't have any fencing at many of our campuses, we're totally exposed. Those recommendations would come from security people that have a skill set higher than I do in what we need and what it would look like. But it is something that we may have to do. The current deferred maintenance that we haven't done, that we need to do, is HVAC, plumbing, foundation, interior structure, finishes, and roofing. I was surprised when I met with the coaches today, and we were discussing what my expectations are and moving forward with facilities, and the basketball coaches told me that the only thing they want is to make sure that the roof doesn't leak. And the roof leaks. And so I'm not sure how significant our roofing issues are, but they have to, whether the bond passes or doesn't, we have to fix that. We cannot allow, because that creates an unbelievable problem that you're aware of. We have traffic issues at the primary school that we're going to make a small step in the next couple of weeks through collaboration with the city and traffic patterns. Patrick, what do we mean by electrical at primary school?
A lot of our leaks at the primary school, they're not roof leaks, they're the electrical junction boxes, and those are leaking, and that's how water's getting into our campus. So it's going up there on the roof and replacing the disconnect junction boxes with stainless steel.
And the exterior structure at intermediate, can you expand on that?
That is the same apron that we did at primary. It's the exact same design at the intermediate, and we have not done that apron. We paid for the design, we have it, we just need to go ahead and execute and build that apron to prevent water from eroding and going underneath the building and messing up the sewer lines.
And furnishings and equipment at the high school?
That's just throughout the library. High school is dated on their furnishing, needs to bring it up to speed.
Why is the roofing always a problem? We don't have maintenance on those?
We do. It's just, there's, as far as actual roof repairs, that's the minimal part. Like we talk about the gyms, they're talking about the gyms, it's actually the HVACs, the units where the water's coming through, it's not the actual roof that's leaking.
That high school's always leaked.
Our problem was when we, it was, I can go through the whole story for you guys, when we did the, changed the units in 2008, it was a comedy of errors. The contractor drilled through the AC pans to put the fire lines, and they said silicone would fix it. Well, it fixes it for a couple of months, and you have to go put a new dab of silicone. The pulleys, when we did the testing and balancing, the company that did it didn't do it correctly, we later went back and we're pulling in twice the amount of fresh air than we should have been, so when it rained, we were sucking the rain in. So it's just been a number of issues. Right now, that's our issue. When we replaced those eight, the air handlers above the gym, that should solve all our leaks in that area and not leak on the gym floor.
So the majority of the leaks is not roof-related?
No.
It's other variables that make it look like.
Yes.
It's roof-related.
So Patrick, what year did we put the floor in?
Was it about five years ago?
It's been a while.
I would say about 13, 14.
Yeah, 13, 14.
Probably about the time we did the baseball field then, right?
Yeah, it was before the baseball field.
Because it was the first project before the baseball field?
Because we, we.
So we realized that it could at least rain one time in Corpus Christi throughout the whole year. No, I mean, has it caused any problems with the floor that we put in? You know, the coaches are saying, oh, just fix the water, we're good, but it's been raining on the floor.
We damaged one spot. If it damages, we replace it, because we, I have, the surface has to be pliable. It was in the small gym, is the only place that we had a small, about a two-square-foot floor that was damaged and was replaced.
But on the main floor, not going to happen on the main floor?
I attribute that to the custodians, they're, when it rains, they're out there with the trash can and they know exactly where to put it and catch it.
So going back to the music program, the consensus was that the music program have outgrown their current spaces with increased participation and additional opportunities. The current instruments can no longer be repaired and are outdated. Providing instruments allows for all students to participate, and current spaces have systems that do not work properly and need to be renovated and furnished with operable equipment and storage. And I kept hearing people say that in the middle school music area, that the smell of rat urination is horrible. And at Tulsa Midway ISD, we can't allow, we cannot allow that to happen. That has to be fixed, with or without a bond, period. So the areas of focus with the bond would be expand program space at all buildings and renovate existing spaces, replace outdated and non-functioning instruments, replace the sound and lighting systems in each building, and replace the fixtures, furniture, and equipment in the fine arts. The, as I said earlier, the primary building is way overutilized. We currently offer pre-K to only those families who qualify, which we should be offering pre-K at least half a day to everybody, to everybody.
Yeah, it helps.
And we're, we're turning people away that want to come to our schools, that should be able to come to our schools, they live in our attendance zone. And this bond and this area of focus would allow us to do that, and it would bring down the capacity at the current primary to 81%, which would allow us for much better opportunities for teaching and learning. So that was the essence of the focus group. And what will happen next, the next step in moving forward is Mr. Kidoja, who will do the next presentation, is going to talk about the fiscal impact to the community of a $98.5 million bond. And then we will move forward with giving you more information, and then if you call for an election in August, then obviously we will take a focus group activity to the community in as many forms as we possibly can schedule. So that, any questions on the focus group, Mr. Vittis?
And it also came up that, well, I brought it up, that the, that the focus group was between now, let's say, I mean, hopefully it will pass, because we need all these improvements, and we need another school. So let's say the community does pass, it's, from what he was stating, the consultant, it seemed like it would be a two, three-year project to get a new school for the primary. Between now and then, we're still running 125%, maybe that'll increase more next year, 126, 127, really unacceptable for our staff and the students. Is there any consideration for portable buildings to alleviate some of the pressure and bring in pre-K for, for our community members that live in our district, that they don't have to take them out of the district?
Could be an option. I priced portable buildings last year, and they were $85,000 for a six-month lease for two classrooms. They're really expensive. I don't think it would be three years. I think depending on the financing arrangements and how many of the $98.5 million bonds we sell, I'm assuming one of the priorities would be to sell enough where we could build an early childhood center. Once the bonds are sold, you've got six months, seven months' worth of design work, and then probably a year's worth of construction. I'd say a year and a half.
That's a big difference from two, three years.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Was he talking from beginning to end? Because on our last bond, we sold it in pieces.
Yeah, that's right. I think Victor's going to answer some of those questions.
We do money in seconds.
I don't think it's Victor's professional opinion to sell $98.5 million worth of bonds in January, okay? So if there's no more questions on that, maybe we'll, let's turn it over to Victor and let him do his fiscal impact.
I'm a president member of the board, Mr. Makey, thank you for having me here this evening. For the recommendation, Dr. Kidoja, I'm a specialized public finance, and we have the honor of representing the district as your financial advisor. My role is to help you kind of plan for a potential bond, and then if the voters approve that bond, to help you get those bonds into the market and get you the best interest rate so you can reduce the tax rate as much as possible. I always get the fun part of the presentation, because I get to talk about how much the tax rate might have to go up in order to support this bond, but we're going to try to, you know, show you maybe a plan here, nothing set in stone, these are just preliminary numbers, and could potentially change as early as next week when we get our certified property values from the appraisal district. So we're still using preliminary values here. So prepared a presentation here for you, you can either look at the screen or maybe on the handout that I passed out to you, the numbers might be clearer there. But since 1998, the district had three successful bond elections. The last one that we had was November 8, 2011, for $36 million. And you can see there, the other ones were in 2006 and then in 1998. So the last time we had a bond election was 2011. And this here is an information slide showing how much debt do we have outstanding right now? And currently, we have about 40, up to about $44 million in debt outstanding. I know it sounds like a lot, but if you see this chart here, what it gives you, it shows you how much debt we have outstanding, but more importantly, when we pay it off under the final maturity column there. And the bottom-left chart, this is your annual principal and interest payments that the district makes each year, and my eyes are bad, I can't even see either of the ones, so I'm winging it here. But you can see here, it's steadily going down, but by 2039, all the debt that we have on the books right now will be paid off. So it's a relatively quick payoff here that the district has for its existing debt and has, creates opportunity to fit in some more bonds if necessary. The next slide, slide number three here, this is a 10-year look back at your total tax rate. The gray area there, that's your maintenance and operation tax rate, and that's the tax rate that we use to pay our teachers and pay the life bills and gas and everything. The green segment there, that's your interest and sinking fund, your debt service tax rate. The only way we could use that tax rate is if we have a successful bond election and we have bonds outstanding, and that's the only way we use it. So during this current year right now, our M&amp;O tax rate is $1.03 per $100 valuation. The INS tax rate, the tax rate they use to repay the existing debt on your books, is currently 15 cents per $100 valuation. So the M&amp;O tax rate, as you all know, for the past few years, we really, as a school district, really have no control over that M&amp;O tax rate. We essentially have to use whatever the state tells us to use under the compression rules. The INS tax rate, the 15 cents, we do have a little bit more control of that tax rate. And in addition to helping you plan for a potential bond, how can we set ourselves up a little bit better? And so we'll be talking about the INS tax rate, what's the strategy that we could do to keep it the same this upcoming year? Because the way that works is as your property values continue to go up, your INS tax rate tends to go down, because those costs on the debt side are, they're fixed, those payments aren't going to change unless you refinance them or pay them off. So we think that our property values, just like many other districts in the state, are going to increase this upcoming year. And so one way, a strategy that we're recommending to the district to incorporate for the first time is called a defeasance resolution, and that's, that's my industry's fancy way of saying, we're going to pay off bonds early, and that's what we call a defeasance. And so basically what this is, is that when you approve your budget in August and your tax rate, what we're going to ask is that you potentially consider a resolution that'll say that you're going to keep your INS tax rate the same at 15 cents, this is the current yield right now, knowing that our property values are going to go up. So what that's going to do, that 15 cents is going to get you a little bit more money during this upcoming year. And what we're going to do is we're going to use that extra money to pay off some of the existing debt that we have right now. So it's going to do two things, it's going to keep your INS tax rate flat until you start issuing more bonds and not let it go down, and then you're going to use that extra money to pay off bonds early and save your taxpayers some interest cost savings. So I hate the win-win situation or cliche, but that's essentially what a defeasance is. So that's what we'd be recommending. So in August, you could potentially see a defeasance resolution that keeps your INS tax rate the same, so you can just keep it level for the taxpayers. This next slide here, the district, as you know, relies pretty heavily on its top 10 taxpayers within the district because of the industrial and commercial concerns that you have. So right now, your district's taxable values that you're using for this year to pay your debt and operate your school district is $3.7 billion. We think that's going to be at least $3.9 billion for this upcoming year. Currently, we rely pretty heavily on the top 10 taxpayers, for the top 10 taxpayers that are listed here, we rely on them for about 55% of our property values. This goes a long way in the INS side here, because they're going to be the biggest contributors and payers of any bond that you're thinking about doing. So you can see there, the pie graph at the bottom there, we just want to show how do the, if you look at your property tax base as a whole, your single-family home. your single-family homes that are the actual voters, they account for about 11% of your tax base. And the vast majority are going to be what we call industrial and commercial concerns. So the top 10 taxpayers account for 55%, but overall, about 84% of your tax base or tax revenues that would come to pay off this bond will be coming from the commercial and industrial segment. So now here, we get to the really small numbers. And for sure, I'm going to wing because I cannot see any of these screens. So this is what we call an INS tax rate impact model. And so our task, in speaking to Mr. Vamitri, is he asked us, how can we support and issue a $98.5 million bond program if we had the election in November? How can we fit that bond program in and mitigate the tax impact over time? So as Mr. Vamitri indicated, I would not recommend that you sell all the bonds at once if the voters gave you their approval to issue $98.5 million on their behalf. The main reason this is, you're not going to be able to use all that money within a year. And so if you issue that debt, you're going to be paying interest on money that you're not using. So one strategy that is not new to the district, we did this back in the 2011 bond program, is that we asked the voters for a certain amount of money, but we issued or sold those bonds and installments over a three-year period, as Mr. Semenigo indicated earlier. And so that's the, there's an added advantage there. Number one, we're not paying interest on debt that we're not using. And number two, your taxpayers won't see a one-time tax rate increase on their tax bills. Basically, you're going to be able to incrementally spread that out. So this model here, detail, shows how we do that. And I highlighted the figures there on the right side. You could see that right now, we're at a little over 15 cents. If the voters give you approval to move forward, we sell about $33 million next year, $33 million in the following year, and then the remaining the third year. And so what that does is that each year, your tax rate doesn't go up by 10 cents like we anticipate for the whole program, but it's going to be about 4 cents per year. But that's going to get less and less because as time goes on, we all live in Texas and pay taxes. The property taxes are going to most likely increase on an annual basis. So let me summarize it here probably better for everybody's eyes, including mine, is this is a summary of that spreadsheet that I showed you, the INS tax rate impact model. So the summary is that the district can pursue a November 2022 bond election for $98.5 million if it wished to do so. As I indicated also, is that we wouldn't sell all that debt all at once. We would spread it out over a three-year period. And the overall tax rate impact would be 10 cents. But that would be after year number three, so three years from now. But in all likelihood, if the property values continue to go up and if they go up even higher next week when we get the certified values, we might be even less than that. And so what does that mean to your homeowner here in this middle box?
Victor, let me stop you for a second. We're all reading that the Fed is going to drastically impact the money supply through possibly a higher interest. Is that going to filter to the bond market?
Yes, but not to the same extent. The rates that we, you know, read about in the newspaper and look at the news, what the Federal Reserve is doing, those are the short-term interest rates. The interest rates that we're talking about here, these are 30-year long-term municipal bond rates. And so they don't move as volatile, although they have been volatile this year. They're not as drastically moving. All the numbers that I'm showing you here, they're all pretty conservative figures. I'm adding quite a bit of cushion on that interest rate just because we know interest rates are going to go up too. So what we have here are probably worst-case scenarios. So we're already planning for that, have planned for that. We're giving you a good cushion. I think at the end of the three-year period, if the program moves forward, I think we'll be less than 10 cents and we'll be less than the interest rates that we're projecting here. I'm being conservative on purpose. So impact to the homeowner. Here in the middle box there, you could see there that, let's say if I had a home and that home is appraised at $250,000. Well, as you know, this past May, the state, we all voted in the additional homestead exemption for our school taxes. And so what does that mean? If I have a $250,000 home that's appraised at that value and I get the homestead exemptions, we get to knock off $40,000 of that value when I pay the taxes. And so really, I'm not paying taxes on $250,000. I'm paying taxes on $210,000 because of those exemptions. So after the three-year period, the full impact to the homeowner, it's about $218 per year. But if you break it out monthly, it's about $18.17 per month to support a $98.5 million bond program. The last box there, we tried to highlight this and you can see I bolded and underlined it, is, you know, the folks that had the over 65 homestead exemption on their homestead will not be impacted by this bond program under current state law. So if you have your homestead plus up to 20 acres, you won't be impacted by this bond program. I say that because that tends to be your most active voter demographic, really, in any community. And so that's just something, as you move along and start communicating with your voters, if you decide to move forward, that's something important to point out to them. So just a couple more slides here. This is, since the district had a bond election in 2011, the bond election rules, particularly for school districts, have changed. In 2019, the legislators wanted to make it a little bit harder for school districts to bundle in, let's say, an elementary school with a brand-new football stadium, like a lot of North Texas and Houston school districts do. And so here in the state, if you're thinking about doing academics, that's fine. But if you're thinking about, let's say, even renovating your football stadium with bond proceeds, which we're not going to do, you would have to segregate and have a separate ballot item. But from the preliminary projects that we're looking at, I don't think we need to segregate anything at this point. There's other categories there that you would have to have, separate propositions that you would have to offer to your voters. But at this point, we're not there. The other thing is that we have to list additional language on the ballot saying that this is a property tax increase. And the third item, this is something schools are already doing. You already set up, you know, brochures and prepare brochures to visit with your community and to talk to them about the impact of the bond and what you're doing with those bond proceeds. The last slide here, ladies and gentlemen, is the summary timetable to target a November 8, 2022 bond election in order to present this to your voters if you decide to do so. The last day under state law is to call that election no later than August 22nd, so next month. And all you need to call that election is the dollar amount, the maximum dollar amount that you're asking your voters for, and also the project list. And that was quite a mouthful, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I got a question here. So on the INS, our tax rate right now is around what, 15 cents? Do you know the others surrounding school districts, what their rates are?
Yes, and I-
I think ours is really low.
Yeah, it is. It is pretty low. So we have a list, and I don't have it with me at home, but we're, if you look at the school districts in the Corpus Christi area, the 40-some-odd school districts, we're probably like in the middle, if not below, the middle there in terms of our total tax rate. But no, your INS tax rate specifically for your debt is pretty low compared to all the other districts. So when you look at that tax rate component, that's pretty low.
Because we can't really change the M&amp;O, right?
Yeah, no, yes, sir. And just for your reference too, the INS tax rate under state law, the highest it could be is 50 cents per $100 valuation. So even if you do this bond, let's say, worst-case scenario, your tax rate goes to 25 cents, you're still not even at half your legal borrowing capacity under state law.
I believe Cowlands is 25 something.
Yes, it's higher than ours.
It's quite a bit.
My previous district was at 50. But their values weren't 3 billion. It was like 140 million. So anything they did impacted the INS rate much higher than what it would here. So Victor, the next step is calling an election?
Yes, sir.
That's right. Once you get the preliminary figures and everything.
And you have-
And the defeasance resolution.
And you have, you'll send us that agenda language and, okay.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all the time and the effort and everything that you put into this. Then, once again, another thorough job.
Victor's the best. He's the best.
He did another thorough job and everything. We appreciate it very much. And I'm sure as the industry and everything else goes up around here, the tax rate base will go up as well. So maybe that tax increase will stay a little more flat. That would be good.
Yeah, I think that's a real thing.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Victor. I appreciate it very much.
Safe travels back home.
Yes, please be careful. Next is discuss and consider student athletic insurance renewal.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to turn this over to our chief financial officer, Mr. K.
This is just our annual renewal. We provide this for our, and it's not just for our athletes. It covers ROTC. It covers pretty much any school-sponsored activity. It covers our participants. It's, we're in the middle, we're in the second year of a two-year rate guarantee. So this is exactly the same premium as it was last year. They offer this plan. It's $145,000. And they also add the other plan that covers, if we ever, if we have a catastrophic injury to a student, we have that coverage for that. Exactly the same price as it has been the last two years, which I never get to say very often, that it didn't go up. And it's what we, it's just, it's more of a formality, is what we do. This insurance renews on August 1st, so that's what we always come to y'all in July. Coaches here, the trainers, everybody knows, you know, if one of our kids gets hurt, anything like that, they help them file the claims and take care of the paperwork and do everything that we need to do if we have a student that gets hurt while they're participating in one of our eligible.
It's always a good thing that we provide this for our students. I mean, it's, we've done this year after year, providing this special insurance. And I think it's a good plan. And the premiums aren't going up, so that is even better.
What kind of claim rate do we have on this? Is there a number of claims that we pretty much averaged every year?
Yeah, I can tell you, man, I don't remember the exact number, but we're, our claims have been pretty steady since I've been here. We haven't had any major activity, but I can't remember the percentage.
Is it like hundreds or how many? Got a guesstimation of a number?
No, it's not, it's not in triple digits. No, it's definitely not in triple digits.
It's a low number. Yes, that's why they stayed at the same price.
It's a supplemental insurance.
And it is supplemental. And if one of those, if a, if a has primary insurance for their student, this kicks in as the secondary recovery, anything that their primary doesn't.
But if they don't have insurance, that's the main thing.
Yes.
That's the best part about it. Any comments or questions? Mr. Vamitri?
Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the annual renewal of Student Athletic Accident Insurance Plan, coverage effective August 1, 2022.
Do we have a motion administrative recommendation? Do we have a second, please? John seconds. Do you have any comments or questions? Are those in favor? Those opposed, question carries. 5-0, thank you very much. And we're going to discuss and consider approval of inter-local agreement with communities and schools in the coastal bend.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to bring this forward tonight as an additional resource for our middle school students. Data has shown that based on coming out of the pandemic, our middle-level students are suffering the most social-emotional issues. Communities and schools have been a successful entity in the coastal bend area for over 36 years. They will offer support and guidance and counseling, parental and family engagement, enrichment, academic support, college and career readiness. It will be funded 100% by federal funds. And it is a $35,000 expense that we will quadruple the savings and if you could put a dollar figure on the help that these people will do for our students. It's an additional resource for our academic counselors and administration. I wish we had the funds to have it in every one of our campuses. But when we met as an administrative group, we clearly recognized the highest need for what we could afford was at the middle school campus.
Communities and schools is a good organization.
Has TM ever had communities and schools?
I do not.
You did?
At one time, years maybe ago.
Over a high school.
At a high school.
15 years ago. And it was a grant that just ran out.
It's been a while. It wasn't very long.
No, it wasn't. But it's a good organization. They do provide what they say they will.
I agree. Gloria Taylor was scheduled to be here tonight, but she had an accident. So I don't think I've been in anywhere that didn't have communities and schools. So I'm really excited to keep that string going. They'll be a big asset to our middle-level kids.
Then they're ready to go with us.
They're ready to go. They've got, I don't know, Ms. Arias, do you? Have you been in contact? Have they presented a candidate for you?
They have not, but we do have the facilities. We have a room set up for them. So we're ready to go.
I haven't talked to Gloria in a week or two, but I was in the impression from her that once this is approved by our board tonight, that she's ready to go.
Is there any startup money that, I thought I'd seen that, but I can't find it. Is there, is there any startup money? I thought they had answered that question.
They bill us.
They bill us.
We get an invoice once a month. They're not TM ISD employees.
Okay.
They're like food service. They're external, but they work with our kids. Yes, they're CIS employees.
I mean, I know that, yeah, right, but it's Title I.
It's federal.
It's federal money, so that's good.
We're just paying it up front.
Yeah, yeah. That way we get to use some of that money.
And I don't foresee anything happening with the reduction of federal funds. I think our economically disadvantaged students are going to, percentage is going to increase versus decrease. And the revenue stream is there to not only continue this program, but to possibly expand it.
Exactly. Okay. Mr. Vamitri?
Yes. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the presented interlocal agreement with communities and schools of the coastal bend.
I'll make that motion administrative recommendation that the board approves the presented interlocal agreement with communities and schools of the coastal bend. Do we have a second, please? 10 seconds. And are there any more questions? Are those in favor? Motion carries, 5-0, thank you very much. Okay, the next one is discuss and consider approval of order and notice of election for the local by ISD Board of Trustees to be held on November 8, 2022.
Ms. Castiel?
The order of election is already presented here in your board packet. I did get a quote from the New Oasis County Elections Department. As of right now, we're looking at the highest amount being about 15,000. But it's only that high right now because nobody else has called their election. The more that join the election, the lower our cost would be. Typically, we get a quote of about 25,000. However, we end up paying close to 6,000 to 8,000 dollars. I did call the county last week and ask them for the early voting sites and election times. I was told that the county commissioners are going to meet and discuss school safety as one of the concerns for the elections because a lot of the election sites are held in public schools. So the county commissioners are really looking at the Uvalde incident, and they are going to meet in August to discuss safety concerns. So as of right now, TM has always had an election site, but due to security issues, we moved it over to the Ag Barn. So there was no interaction with students. So they're at their own location, own parking lot, they're not entering into our school buildings, but they are encouraging superintendents if they would like to attend the county commissioners' meeting and speak in public open forum to state what concerns the school districts have with election polling sites being held at the campuses. So, reason being why I don't have the dates or the times or locations yet, because they won't meet until next month. But we will start taking applications for place on ballot this Saturday from 10:00 to noon, so we felt it was, you know, necessary to go ahead and start calling for the election now.
Is it your desire that I advocate that we vote at our campus, or is the Ag facility meeting?
I thought the Ag facility was great.
Ag worked real good. There was, you didn't have it.
I would prefer.
That was perfect.
I thought it was.
I think that'd be the securest.
And even the election officials at there liked it.
Beautiful facility.
They weren't obstructed by kids and stuff going in and out and everything all the time. They, they liked it.
Takes a lot of pressure off the principals and the security at the.
Just the parking, like at the high school, the teachers would have to park somewhere else?
That worked out well.
I like that.
So that's what I'll advocate on our behalf.
Is there a recommendation, Director?
I don't see this in.
Well, typically, you just read the order of election. It's, it's the board.
Okay, the order of election. Whereas the Board of Trustees is there to call the election here and order, whereas and hereby officially found and determined that said meeting was open to the public in public notice of the time, place, and purpose of this said meeting was given as required Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Governor's Code 551, therefore be ordered by the Tulsa Midway Independent School District Board of Trustees that an election be held on November 8th, 2022 for the purpose of electing Board of Trustees positions for Tulsa Midway Independent School District. Trustee plays four, four years. Trustee plays four, four years. Trustee plays five, four years. Trustee plays six, four years. Trustee plays seven, four years. Application for place on the ballot shall be filed by 5:00 PM August 22nd, 2022, in conjunction with the TM ISD, the New Oasis County Clerk and Commissioners who determine the upcoming election dates, times. Early voting will be conducted during the period of time required, permitted by law. First day of early voting will begin October 24th and then delivered. The fourth application for early voting ballot shall be mailed to Karas Sands, New Oasis County, Clearinghouse Election Division, P O Box 2627, Corpus Christi, Texas.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I'm so sorry. One of these places should be two years.
Two years.
I think two of them should be.
No.
Or is there just one at least?
They're all four years.
No, because Janie, Janie fills in for.
And she has to go to the next resolution.
She has to go. She's thrown off cycle because of what happened. And so, because when we spoke with the attorneys, typically, he would have had two more years left on his term, but once he, once she took over, it started all over again. She, the person.
You're gonna have five board members on one for four years, all of them?
So we're gonna stay on this cycle like this?
Yeah.
And then, so the next election, there's only two board members?
As of right now, yes. We will. I can double-check with the attorney, but that's the wording they gave us this last year.
That doesn't sound right.
When we did the appointment, it was supposed to be appointed for one year, then run for two years, and then she goes back into cycle. That was the way, otherwise it made.
Or Janie?
Yeah, otherwise it makes no sense for us to have appointed her.
She, she was.
We could have just done a special election to keep it as.
That was, that was not an option. The way the time worked out and whatnot, the verbiage from the attorney said it was up until the next school board election. I was with, with you on this.
Right, that's what I'm saying. When Mr. Holzer came on board, he ran for that election to claim the seat, then he had to run in his regular slot two years later.
Right. I will check with the attorney again, but based on the verbiage, because I, Ms. Akora was here at the time, and we kind of went back and forth asking like, well, are you sure it's not supposed to be only until, and she was very specific, that he, it would run into a brand-new election on November. The, the verbiage says the next school board election. She is only filling in that spot up until that time, and then they would have to run again for school board. But let me get clarification if it is only two years.
I understand him running, but I didn't, I thought it would just be two years for that term.
I'll check with her.
So I believe that's it.
Why don't we ask the attorney?
We did, we did ask the attorney.
Ms. Castiel, why don't we do this? Why don't we get a second opinion?
Okay.
Why don't we conference with Juan Cruz and his people to see what their opinion is? Because you have all the information that they would need to give us an opinion.
Yes.
Could we do that tonight, so she can get this done, or are we gonna?
When y'all go into closed session, I can try to get ahold of him.
Okay.
We'll have to table this, right?
Well, if, if.
Table this until we get clarified.
Till we get a clarification.
You have Juan, so?
I do.
Okay.
Well, just to make it clear, when we did that, when she got appointed, we asked the attorneys, because if I'm not mistaken, we asked the attorney, I think when she was on the phone, and she said it was only, that she would have to re-run again for two years.
Okay, we'll double-check with her.
I remember running again, but I don't think it was two years.
I thought so too. I, I agree. I thought it was two years off.
It really throws the whole cycle off. Because we're very top-heavy on one and very.
Because then in '24, it only been four months.
Yep, but it's gonna continue like that.
Yes.
Yeah, this would stay like that forever unless we've made some sort of changes.
Motion to postpone until further information. We're putting it into what a table.
No. Okay, we'll postpone.
Postpone?
Postpone.
Do you have to motion that?
Okay. All others in favor to postpone till we get more information?
We're talking about postponing till tonight.
No, we're not till tonight, till we get the more information.
No, if she can't get home, then we'll have to table it, right?
Yeah, then we'll have to table it.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay, so that's what we'll do. So, we'll do that. Discuss and consider approval of JJAEP contract. That's something we have to do every year.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, this is an annual event so that we can continue to serve our students that have been expelled for discipline behavior or criminal justice matters. All of the school districts in New Oasis County, plus, there's one other one. Aransas Pass, there's one other school district that utilizes the New Oasis County JJAEP. The contract is boilerplate. It's up to the year 2027, and in order for us to have that discipline alternative, we will need your approval.
There's still just two seats, correct?
Yes.
We, we normally commit to two seats to start each year, and then if we need another, we have to purchase it as we need it. Sometimes we can sell our empty seats to our districts where they need it, if we don't need them.
We've done that in the past.
That happens every year.
Okay.
We have to minimum, we are committed to at least two seats.
It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the JJAEP contract as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Venmetri. Motion administrative recommendation, please.
I'll be.
Ben, do we have a second, please? Jan? Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one is discuss and consider approval of COVID resolution.
Ms. Alizonda?
Yes, we come before you again for the third time since COVID came into place. It is the same resolution that we brought to you last year, and the only change that we have is that we have reduced the number of days that we are providing from 10 days to five days, and the reasons are the same. If you, you, the qualifying reasons would be if you test positive for COVID, if you have to take care of a spouse, your partner, or a child under the age of 14 who has tested positive, if you have a child under school age who is in a pre-K facility and they have closed due to COVID, and if you are awaiting the results of a COVID test. Those are the four reasons that it was the same as last year. Very contagious.
So this is not state-funded or federal-funded?
No, this is.
This is the second time we've done this without state or federal funding, correct?
Right.
Third.
No, the first time was with state funding.
It was two and a half. The first time, it ended like December 31st, so the board approved the rest of that year, all of last year, and then this coming year.
So how much does this cost us each year?
Well, if you, if you add up the, the number of days, I did not look up to see how many days of COVID leave we used this year. I mean, I will, I do know, I guess I can give you a dollar figure, but I know the variant, the variant right now is apparently pretty contagious, but I think the normal city, the, the period of where we're saying, okay, it's okay to come back after so much time. The answer is, like I said last year, is I think it's, it's something we, it's another benefit that we can provide our employees.
Well, with most of these cases here, though, it's five days and then five days with a mask, according to CDC, but it doesn't say anybody has to pay the employee for being out.
No, it does not.
You don't have to do this.
No, we don't have to.
This is just a benefit.
A benefit to our employees.
No, no, I'm just saying this, you know, at the five days, if you do this and they're, they still have to, they still should be wearing a mask up to the additional five days.
Well, TEA says that they recommend, because we can't force anyone. They recommend.
We should have a figure of what this cost us last year.
Anna, so if I had COVID, if I took care of my child with COVID, and then I got COVID, are you allowed to use this twice?
Just once. It's five, five days maximum.
So the employee have to be on their own for the five days?
They would have to use their 10 days, the five days of state and five days of local that we give at the beginning of each year.
Well, how many, how many days of sick leave does it each?
We get five state days for personnel, and then we get five days for local sick.
Ten.
Ten. Plus five is 15.
Plus this adds another five?
Well, it's 15.
So it leaves 15, yeah.
It's.
Plus, you might, you may have leave that you haven't yet accumulated, so if you haven't exhausted your leave, you could have.
On top of those days you have, what, like PTO or like personal leave? You're going to personal leave is what you're saying?
No, you get, you get state leave and you get local leave. If you don't, if you get 10 days, you get five and five of each every year, but if you don't use them, they keep going. You, they accumulate.
Well, they accumulate as well.
Yes.
So we could have a 20-year teacher with several days on.
So we have some teachers that.
Yeah.
During their time, they just stay.
Unfortunately, though, because of the last two years, we have a lot of employees that have exhausted, they, whatever they built up.
Was that due to, that they didn't want to come back? Because we had a lot of teachers not wanting to come back. That they exhausted.
No, it was either.
For personal reasons or for sick reasons.
If you're an employer and you, and you don't come, you don't come to work for three days, you have to, you have to, you have to provide documentation that you were sick or whatever, why you were out, or you had, you know, what type of leave you used. But unfortunately, because of the last couple of years, a lot of people have exhausted their leave, so we front-load, we give everybody their leave upfront, starting the year. This just gives, helps our employees out. It's a benefit, it's additional. And this is only in effect for next year. This is only for.
We would be in the minority if we didn't offer this.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to be, I'd like to get Stephen's question answered. I mean, we should have a figure somewhere. We could see what it costs us.
I, I know we can go back and look at the subsystem and see how many COVID days or how many leaves.
They have to have a doctor's test or is it self-test?
Home test. In the resolution, it says home test will not be recognized simply because you don't know whose it is. You could take a picture of a positive test. They're not gonna bring a positive test with COVID up here. So somebody could take a, a home test and just take a picture of the result, but you don't know whose it is. So it's got to be our school, because we test all our employees and our students if they so desire, or they can go to a place that's a testing center. Walgreens.
So if they miss three days, no test comes back negative on day four?
If they're waiting for it, it counts. If they're waiting for the results.
That's what it says, if they wait for the results. Okay. Is there a recommendation for this?
There is. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the COVID Extended Leave Resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Venmetri. Do we have a motion administrative recommendation? Do we have a second?
I'll say a second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Or one? Discuss and consider approval of TT pass list of appraisers.
Ms. Alizonda?
Yes, this is a formality where we have policy DNA. This is that before we start the appraisal of our teachers, that we must bring the list of appraisers to the board for their approval. And it's, of course, it's all the supervisors, because the teachers must be appraised by a supervisor, but, and then we have some extra ones here, Dr. White, myself, and Ken Amody, and this is in case somebody wants a second appraisal or there's a problem. This is the official list of appraisers for this school year.
Okay.
It is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the T test appraisers for the 22-23 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Venmetri. Do we have a motion administrative recommendation, please? Ben? A second, please? John? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. And we go discuss and consider approval of 2022-2023 Student Code of Conduct.
Dr. White?
Good evening, members of the board. This is an extension from when we met prior, I believe in May, to discuss the dress code for school year 22-23. This is to finalize the other part of it, the Student Code of Conduct, which contains the dress code portion of the policies that we enforce from the dress code. And so just, this is the annual update that's been made. There were not many updates this year. However, the, the key ones I would like to point out include some more defined protocols for when students are being processed through the threat assessment team. For instance, if there was a threat and that qualified for review by the threat assessment team, there are some additional stipulations that have to be followed in order to be in compliance with that assessment team. So things like that were updates, and this is just the, bringing it to your attention that this is just another annual update that we make for you all. And so, if there are any questions or... We do this every year.
Yes. Interesting reading.
Glad you find it interesting.
Yes. The administration recommends for the Board of Trustees to approve the Tulsa Midway ISD 2022-2023 Student Code of Conduct as presented.
Thank you, Dr. White. Do we have a motion admin? Yes, Jan, we have a second, please? Ben? He stepped out. He listened here for the recommendation, so. All those in favor? Those in case? Okay. Discuss and consider approval of District Professional Development Plan. Dr. White? Another comment?
This is another annual compliance piece that will be brought forward for years to come. This is the first time we are bringing together for you all the District Professional Development Plan. This is something that was collaborated on through our District Improvement Committee, and this is one thing that will be embedded into the meeting cycle that will occur starting in the fall semester. And so what you will find in our District Professional Development Plan are the mandated and required trainings that are found in statute, whether that's state or local policy, it is all outlined for you. It also includes certain measures that help better define our instructional focus of the district. And so what we're trying to do is to tailor this development plan as we are creating our curriculum and instruction plans so that they dovetail each other and that they are aligned. And one thing I would like to point out too is that TEA has partnered with Clearinghouse, and they have issued a new alignment development chart, and they have worked to reduce the[1766.81] number of mandated trainings down to seven from about fifteen to help condense and create a better focus. So employees and teachers are not just being overwhelmed or over inundated with trainings, but reducing it to where there's a clear focus and that it's time well-spent. And of course, the remainder being filled in by the district as par, as, as we, as we sort choose.
That was a good effort there. I noticed that going through it, it was well-thought-out.
Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three T M I S D professional development plan as presented.
I'll make that a motion recommend that board of trustees approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three T M I S D professional development plan as presented. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much. Notice, public notice, federal grant applications.
We are almost through, Mr. President. Dr. White?
Yes, sir. Members of the board, this is another annual compliance update that we are making for you all tonight. Three of the federal grants that we will be applying for this year will include the Every Student Succeeds Act, or E S A, the Special Education Consolidated Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, and then the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act, or Perkins Five. These are the three federal grants that we will be applying for this year. Last year, when we brought this forward to you all, we included E S R as the grants on there. But E S R is not a grant that we no longer have to apply for. It just rolls over. So that's the reason why you see a reduced number of federal grants that we will be applying for this year. And so the public notice is just to be transparent about which grants we are applying for, how much money we're being allotted. And with your approval, that information will be posted to the website. And this is just a board report, so there's no action required, but we just, again, wanted to bring your attention because it is a public notice and something that is required for us to post for transparency reasons.
Good. Federal grants application, that's good. I'm glad the E S R one just rolled this whole.
Sir.
Mr. Carroll is too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Unfortunate.
Yeah, unfortunate. Report twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three district student handbook.
And again, this is the time of the year where we bring forward all the yearly annual updates, one of which is the district handbook. Right now, the campuses have finalized their handbooks, and everybody's handbooks, the district, including the campuses directed for the students, are updated and ready to go for the first day of school. And with those will come the acknowledgement forms that we have worked hard to get into our online system. But we are being told that there are a few more things that we have to do to set that up. So we will go to paper forms for the acknowledgement pieces in hopes that soon, hopefully for next school year, that we can move fully online with those forms. And these forms include things such as our acceptable use policy, acknowledging the code of conduct, and just like I said, those yearly forms and acknowledgements that we do every year.
I have a question. Historically, is the student code of conduct available to parents at registration?
I am not aware of that. Maybe somebody with more experience can answer that question.
It has been in the past.
I'm unfamiliar with the student code of conduct.
Well, we did it differently this year, sir, when we broke it up into doing the dress code first and then the code of conduct second, when the.
Yeah, it's usually presented as one comprehensive package where the, the board approves the dress code and the code of conduct, and the handbook is informational.
Correct.
And, and the reason for that being informational is because there's, it's a living document. And there's times where the campuses will want to change something in the handbook. And if it's board-approved, they don't have the authority to do that unilaterally. They would have to wait for a board meeting. But if they do change anything, then it's always brought back to you for informational. But in the, in the future, we will make a concerted attempt to have this. It, it's only fair to our parents that, that they know what the constitution of the school is prior to the first day of school.
There's a report from Dr. White.
Yes.
That was some more interesting reading.
Always is.
Yes. Okay. Next is the consent agenda items.
Mr. President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Van Matry. I'll make that motion if we consider the agenda items as listed, one through four. Do we have a second, please? John's second. Questions? All those in favor?
William alone. I didn't find it too bad.
Okay, now we will go back and revisit. Item number nine, discuss and consider approval of order.
Did you talk to White?
Yes. So what was discussed was in closed session. So I wasn't in closed session when y'all met with the attorney. And yes, it is two years.
Okay. Back to this item number nine, discuss and consider approval of order of notice of election for Toulouse Midway Independent School District Board of Trustees to be held on November the eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas board of trustees, advise we to call the election here and ordered, hereafter ordered and, whereas is hereby officially found and determined that the said meeting was given open to the public in public notice of time, place, purpose of the said meeting was given as required by Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code five-five-one, therefore being ordered by the Toulouse Midway Independent School District Board of Trustees that an election is to be held on November the eighth, two thousand twenty-two for the purpose of electing board of trustees position for Toulouse Midway Independent School District, place two, four-year terms, place four, two-year, two-year terms. Now, place five is four years' term, place six is four years, place seven is four years. Application for placed on the ballot shall be filled by five P M. August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. In conjunction with the Toulouse Midway Independent School District, the Nuasis County Clerk's Commissioners, County Clerk, and Commissioners will determine the upcoming election dates, times, and locations. Early voting will be conducted during the period of time as required and permitted by law. First day of early voting will begin October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two and end on November fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Application for early voting ballots by mail shall be mailed to Kara Sands, Nuasis County Clerk, contention to Election Division, P O Box two-six-two-seven, Corpus Christi, Texas, seven-eight-four-zero-three. Application for ballots by mail must be received no later than the close of business on October the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. All election day sites will be those listed by Nuasis County Clerk Kara Sands and will open November the eighth at seven P M. and close at seven P M. Herein, the Nuasis County Clerk's office will provide, if this is stated, full-service election for the Toulouse Midway Independent School District. Herein, all election officers, presiding judges, and alternate presiding judges designated by the Nuasis County Clerk's office are hereby appointed and confirmed to hold said election at said polling places. Herein, all residents determined to be qualified voters of the district shall be entitled to vote at said election. Herein, this order shall serve as proper notice of said election, and said notice shall be published one time by the said district, not earlier than thirty days or later than the tenth day prior to the date set for the election. In a newspaper of general circulation in, in said district, in addition, said notice will be posted on a bulletin board used for posting notice of meetings of the board of trustees not later than twenty-one days prior to the date set for the election. This order is issued the eighteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-two. In all respects, said election shall be conducted in accordance with Texas state law and Texas election code. All those in favor of said, yes? Five-zero.
Did you read that marker?
Yeah. Yeah, let's read it again. We missed a few words.
I got halfway through, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Since we got our answer.
Is that, I'm just sorry, is that a vote?
Yeah, that's, yeah, five-o.
So who seconded? Because everybody.
I don't know. Nobody seconded. That's what I'm saying.
I thought somebody did second it.
I seconded it. Oh, okay.
Had you, had you?
No, he, he called it.
I saw it. John seconded. John seconded.
I didn't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. All right. I was gonna ask, do y'all want to take a short recess, or y'all to continue with you?
We have two people.
Two people. Just, okay, let's go ahead. The board convening closed meeting is authorized by Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code five-five-one, possible. Discussing board of certain type personnel, discussing board non-chapter twenty-one contact personnel. It's eight oh six P M. April, July the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We're back in open session. Mr. Van Matry?
Mr. President, members of the board, the administration recommends the educator-professional probationary contract for the employees as presented.
Okay, let's get the book. Okay.
Also, move along.
You'll, you'll make the motion any second. Ben's second. All those in favor? Okay. Is there any further business, Mr. Van Matry?
No, sir.
No further business? Entertained a motion to adjourn? John's second. And all those in favor? Thank you all for coming.